It's 7:30, we're ready to go. Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of July 30th. We'll start the meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, I just want to point out that Heather Smith, our longtime planning person, has gone over to the police and we miss her and I'm sure Heather misses being here. Yes Heather, I'm sure you do. I'm sure she just misses all the time she doesn't get to spend with us, so we'll have to send her emails. Okay, so next is approval of the minutes from May 21st. I just had some typos, but I didn't see anything, but any other corrections?
I didn't get a copy.
The email, Melissa emailed them. Do you want?
We can wait if that's.
It's two pages, yeah, I reviewed it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And Leslie's recusing herself. I'm standing because she wasn't here. And then I'll give you my two corrections. Okay, next we have items, citizens comments, and these are for items that are not on the agenda, so just come up to the podium, give your name and your address, and go for it. Don't you just love the silence? Okay, so next we have our Carroll County Planner.
Good evening, Commissioned Members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. So just to give you a few updates, I saw on the agenda about the rezoning, so just to let you know what's the latest with that. We'll be forwarding, the Planning Commission will be reviewing the Commercial, Industrial and Employment Campus text on this coming Wednesday at their Planning Commission meeting at 6 o'clock. And if it's approved, it will be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for consideration. So stay tuned for that. As far as the Bicycle, Pedestrian and Master Plan, we just finished up our photo contest and currently, as far as submissions, and we will be looking for public vote until August 17th. So you can visit carolbikepedplan.org to vote on the pictures that were submitted. And the top prize will go to, well, the top person who receives the most votes will receive a $50 race pace gift card. Chapter seven is now on the website, it was accepted by the Planning Commission on July 17th, that's the Design Alternatives and Safety chapter, so you can check that out on carolbikepedplan.org. And we will be introducing Chapter six, which is Transportation Alternative, which includes recommendations for a complete streets policy for the county. And you can definitely check that out, that's on the website as well. And just to let you know, I will be leaving the county. My last day will be August 10th and Arco Sen will be the new Liaison Planner for Mount Airy.
Welcome.
Where are you going, Ms. Nikomas?
Oh, I'll be working at Maryland National Capital Parks and Planning Commission.
That's cool then, yeah, that's funded.
Nikomas, not to put you on the spot, but seeing as how you're leaving us and so forth, in terms of any changes or any proposals, you know, updates or changes in the Carroll County Master Plan, could you distill for our benefit, you know, the impacts or the relevancy in terms of greater Mount Airy? Is there anything that sticks out that we need to be aware of or we need to really research and better understand that's different from what we've already seen in terms of the County Master Plan?
Not sure what you mean, you're talking about as far as the rezoning efforts?
I'm talking about rezoning, I'm talking about, you know, the procedures for development, maybe some of the development trends, some of the projections and so forth. From a planning standpoint, seeing as how, you know, we're municipal here in Mount Airy, I'm just wondering, you being on the county level, you know, do you have any, you know, suggestions or insights that you might share with us before we have to say sayonara to you?
I did not have anything specifically, no.
Okay, all right, because we're very interested in continuing to coordinate very closely with both Carroll County and Frederick County, okay? Because we believe in regional planning, we believe in a coordination of values and planning for our municipality in both counties, okay? And that there's a harmony there and there's a, you know, kind of an upfront, kind of, you guys might want to think about this, here's the direction we're looking at, let's talk, so forth.
Well, Linda is definitely aware of, you know, the desires of Mount Airy and so the work will definitely continue on, Arco is now aware that this is something that is a goal of yours, so we will definitely continue to work with you and reach those goals.
Well, thank you very much for your time for being here, we appreciated it.
Thank you.
On the best, good luck.
Good luck.
In Arco, we look forward to working with you.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm pretty sure that that person will have, if they haven't started, they will be at the August meeting because I'm gonna make them be.
It's condition of employment?
Monica, you just got used to being with us again, come on. You want a life? And the dogs love it and the horse loves it too, so. So Frederick County Planner, Tim Goodfellow, hi, Tim.
Good evening, Commissioned Members, I have a couple of updates to share with you this evening. First, the county, congratulations Nikomas, I wish you well, nice to meet you, Arco. So the county did, our council recently adopted our Bike Ways and Trails Plan update, I think that was an update from, I think, 1999, so it's in dire need of revision, so that should be on the website or I can certainly mail a hard copy to the Commission if you would like to see that. And then Liverpool Frederick still churns on, the Planning Commission is still reviewing all the comments, the many, many numerous comments they've received and maybe the Planning Commission members would want a deeper dive into Liverpool Frederick, I've kind of given the surface view. I'd be glad to have one of my colleagues who's much more involved in the process come give a briefing to the Planning Commission, because it's, you know, as I mentioned before, it's a very different approach than how the county's done planning in the past, so it's kind of a nice radical change, so if you'd like a deeper dive, I'd be glad to have my colleague come.
Yes, I think there's coming up nodding heads here, yes, we would.
Okay. There's a site plan that I'll just describe briefly to you, very close to your borders, it's on Bartholomew's Road, maybe a mile or so south of 144, and it's proposal for 10 soccer fields. It's FC Frederick, I think it's a well-known group around, they're proposing 10 soccer fields on that 150 acre farm with a few dwellings down the road.
So, Tim, that's a private recreational park?
Correct, right, yeah, non-public, just for this soccer group. The county, we're gonna be kicking off the update of our Water and Sewerage Plan, you know, every three years, as you well know, the state requires the counties and whatever municipalities cover their own water and sewer to update the Water and Sewerage Plan. And in the past, we've relied heavily on Carroll County for all the Mount Airy stuff because we do include Mount Airy in our Water and Sewerage Plan, though it's a unique blend, certainly. So that'll be starting this fall and that's due to the state next summer. So that's all I had, if you have any questions for me, I can schedule, consult with my colleague about coming to a future meeting.
That would be great.
Tim, I think one of our ongoing concerns is the revised projections for development, you know, within an arm's length of Mount Airy on the Frederick County side, and kind of reminding us, you know, fairly frequently what those projections look like and the timeframes, okay? That's of concern and interest to us.
I know I did a kind of a quick summary several months ago of the developments around it, but certainly worthy of a maybe quarterly update.
Yeah, that's why we wanted to kind of kept you on as an ongoing item, because we want to always be aware of it. Any other questions for Tim? Thank you, Tim, I appreciate. Okay, next on our new business, Lot 19, Twin Arch Business Park Service Master Concept Plan, Monica.
Yeah, I'm just gonna summarize what I have in my staff report here. This is a company that's currently leasing space, I think they're over in Twin Ridge Industrial Park, and they want to build a brand-new building in the Twin Arch Business Park, so that's Lot 19. They're proposing to build a 19,000 square foot building on that lot, and of course, you know, their services include restoring buildings, homes, personal property following disasters such as floods, you understand what they do for a living. The concept plan illustrates a new building measuring 100 feet by 170 feet totaling 17,000 square feet on the first floor, and then there's an additional 2100 square feet of second-story building space, so it's a total of 19,100 square feet of gross floor area for the entire building, so that splits up into 78 percent that's in warehouse space and then about 22 percent that's devoted to office space. Entry into the site is located in the southeast corner of the lot, circulation is to the front of the building and along the eastern side of the building, there isn't an aisle way provided on the western side of the new building, there's a grass well there and water drain, it just is shown on that side of the building. The site plan shows a standard building layout with adequate circulation, just like all the other buildings in the industrial park, they need to provide dumpster screening details on the site plan that's not shown, and also provide some railing details for the proposed loading dock area. The concept plan is currently being circulated through the Carroll County Development Review Office, all town and county agency comments will be required to be addressed. Now, I've attached everything that the engineer has gotten so far, you'll notice that they do have some significant stormwater management comments to address, so that's why we're still just writing the concept plan. The lighting on the site is pretty conservative, they only have really like two light poles, two standing light poles, one's in the back of the building and one's in the front of the building, most of their lighting on the site is wall packs, and it does meet the requirements for lumens and LED, you know, we've switched to LED lighting now in the industrial park and there's different requirements now for the limitations on that. There's a total of 47 parking spaces provided for the new building, 30 are for the warehouse portion of the building and 17 are provided for the proposed office space. The total number of parking spaces provided meets the requirements of the town parking. They also have quite a few loading docks, so there are eight loading dock spaces located on the eastern side of the new building, six of those spaces are 12 by 12 and three are 14 by 14. Parking lot, drive aisle measures 25 in width, 25 feet in width and is adequate for two-way traffic. The plan also shows two loading dock spaces in the rear of the building and they are 12 feet by 45 feet in length. Landscaping is just a combination of shrubs mostly in the front of the building and a combination of like flowering trees and other trees around the side of the building. Public improvements, there are no utility upgrades or improvements in the public right-of-way associated with this project, the developer of the business park has provided basic infrastructure needs, existing water and sewer lines for the tie-in to the building are shown in the correct location, we checked that, staff got together and checked to make sure that they were shown correctly to tie-in to the building. Architecture elevations have been provided in concept site plan package, the building will be constructed of a pre-engineered metal with a four-foot split-face block type of decoration border on the bottom. Pre-finished aluminum doors will be installed in the loading bays as shown on the plan. Concept exterior colors are shown as dark gray roofing, light gray siding, yellow fabric awning, and I think that's probably Service Master logo-related, those color, that color combination. The building architecture is normal and typical for the business park. Signage, location for the freestanding monument sign should be shown on the plan if applicable, and of course, a separate sign application review will occur with the approved zoning administrator. Staff will bring forward to the Planning Commission for review and consideration of the proposed signage design if it's deemed necessary. Water and sewer allocation application, the proposed addition will yield an increase of 850 gallons per day and is accounted for in the water and sewer demand for the approved pipeline development for the whole business park.
Okay.
Adequate facilities, they're good on water, good on sewer, schools don't apply, of course, roads and traffic control devices is pending, the traffic generation data is under review, fire and rescue services, that's also pending, and of course, our police are adequate now, and parks and open spaces not applicable. So staff recommends the Planning Commission conditionally approve the site plan for Lot 19 with town and county agency comments addressed. Screening for the dumpster, details for the railing and sign application be submitted to the town for approval. So it is, it's pretty basic. I don't think there's anything really outstanding about the site plan itself, it's right next to an existing building which is, I can't remember what's in the building, it's kind of catty-corner to the gymnastics center.
Is the applicant here? Did you, do you wish to add anything to what Monica said?
Not necessarily, I have any questions for me.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
Just one question.
So then, would you give mine, sorry, we don't, just give your name and please, when you get up there, thank you.
How y'all doing, my name is Brent Cross and I am the owner of Service Master.
Okay, Brent, I know that Monica said that the traffic generation study is under review, could you give us some kind of estimate as to traffic that will result, as a result of the installation? And the reason I say that is because we have some concern about the traffic patterns over in east Mount Airy and the impact at the Twin Arch Road and Highway 27 intersection.
Currently, we are in that business park now and about 80 percent of my staff operates out of there, we currently lease another four or five warehouses in Frederick, so we want to get all into one building, so I have about 30 to 32 employees and about 80 percent of them operate there now, and Frank Dertspal's building, if y'all are aware of that. So we are currently, we've been operating there for seven years, so, in a very small space, and so I don't think that'll impact anything at all.
So there's not going to be really any incremental?
Not at all, not at all, we've been doing it for seven years, I don't think anything's gonna change.
Thank you, any other questions for him? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone want to make a motion on this one?
I move that we conditionally approve the site plan amendment for Lot 19, Section four of Twin Arch Business Park for Service Master with the following conditions, all town and county agency comments shall be addressed in the final site plan to include, A, screening details for dumpster enclosure to be provided in the final plan, details for the railing of the loading dock are delineated in the final plan, and a sign application shall be submitted to the town for any freestanding sign posted on the site.
Anyone want to second that? Can you feel a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Not opposed, thank you so much, sir, thanks for building in Mount Airy. Okay, next we have, reviewing discussion of the highlights of the downtown master plan, first public workshop, the handout on defining a charrette.
Can I just tell you that we're, our charrette is gonna be in late September, we again had a really hard time trying to schedule space. It actually was enlightening for me because I didn't realize how busy Mount Airy was and how much the facilities around here are used, it's unbelievable. Really, I mean, it's crazy, they're busy a lot, especially in the summertime, it's tough to do because there's things in the evening, there's things during the day, there's daycare, there's, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on, so we've scheduled for the 24th, 25th, 26th and 27th of September, roughly 10:00 in the morning till 8:00 in the evening, it will be at the Mount Airy Volunteer Carnival grounds. We're gonna feed our consultants a lot in four days, I'm pretty sure, because they're gonna be there pretty continuously.
What were the dates again?
So I don't think they're gonna break down, out 24th to the 27th.
And would you say 10:00 AM to what, 8:00 PM?
Yeah, roughly speaking, I think they'll be earlier there to set up everything, and I think they're gonna keep their machines and their stuff going, I don't think they're gonna break down every night and set back up in the morning.
So we're in the activities building, right.
Okay.
Right. So this, the charrette thing is something that Cecily Bedwell sent me and I just thought everybody would like to look at it because not everybody knows what a charrette is, and it's just, you know, it's just a little ditty on what it's not and what it is, so, and if you, if you all want to just talk about any high points that you thought happened during the workshop, the downtown workshop that Erin did.
I asked them.
Your microphone.
Sorry, I was talking to the ladies after, they expected 40 people and got in excess of 100. You know, they were, they were really surprised, and they were really surprised that people were actually discussing things competently and knew what they were talking about. So it was, it was good for everybody, thanks for pumping up all, everybody, because I think we were all there.
And we'll do the same thing for the charrette, you know, we'll think, we'll draw up some ideas for promoting the charrette, you know, at least a month in advance and use some, you know, whatever material, social media and stuff like that.
We've been doing a real good job of that so far, media's been well attended and everything, and that's what you got.
Yeah, I think they've been pleased.
Well, it just shows how much people care about the town.
I thought it was very, I mean, the people were very positive, it was a very positive experience, and I think people learned a lot while they were there, yeah.
Monica, one thought that comes to mind, because we have a great relationship with Carroll Media Center, they might be willing to produce a PSA.
That'd be great.
Reach to let people know, you know, what the charrette's gonna be and when it's gonna be, okay, I'll speak to them.
Oh, that'd be great, Bill. Any other comments about that meeting, the workshop we had? I know we were all there, not all the town council was there, but we were. Okay, well, then we got that down, we've got 9:24 to 9:27, from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and at the reception hall, at the party, so, okay.
And so all people are welcome.
Yeah, please come, please come.
Monica, is this discussion of what a charrette is and how ours is intended to proceed, is it going to be posted on the website?
It can be, I think that's just more like a boilerplate explanation meant to be an educational tool to someone who might not know what it is.
Well, that's why I was wondering, if we could link it to the town website.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I think it should be, yeah.
Okay, thank you, okay. Any else on that topic? Okay, next under old business, petition for annexation, Dorsetown, the frail developers referred from town council for recommendation, continued discussion of issues, the recommendation is due no later than August 27th, 2018 meeting, sorry, I ended up sending you staff report right before this afternoon, so I hope you guys got a chance to read it.
That's my apologies too, that I didn't get to it until, I did send it to Tom because he needed to look at it before you all received it, and the other thing, the other piece of information that you had asked for previously is just a little bit of information about utility connections because it involves people that are already in existing homes and they would be required to hook up to public water and sewer, and so this memo is really just meant to explain, you know, that that would be their obligation and then they have an additional obligation to hire a plumber to build the connection from their house to the main line, which is an additional cost beyond just the tap fee.
And then there's local and county taxes.
Right, and you would be, yeah, they would be, you know, assessed for city taxes once they're registered, so.
Do we know approximately how many existing resident homes there are in this parcel?
Yeah, I have a few questions, are, are they here?
I know there's 18 parcels, there's 18, there's 18 actual parcels altogether.
New parcels?
No, the old, yeah.
Well, what wasn't clear is whether it's just those eight existing homes plus the fraud development and that other, that other where she doesn't live here, or whether there's other people.
And so it's, you know, because there's 18 parcel numbers, actually, liborfolia numbers actually listed on the annexation.
Right, right, so that's it, there's no other people who live there?
Noel, can you answer that question?
Hi, for the record, Noel Manolo with Miles and Stock, which I have the petitioner, yes, it's approximately eight, I believe it's eight existing residences, as Ms. Marbach noted, there are numerous parcels, but a couple of them, there's one residence for two maybe parcels, I'm thinking of the Midge Thomas parcel in particular, and then for a couple of them, there's, it's, there's an abandoned resident, so I guess technically it's not an existing resident.
Okay, so every, all the residents signed off?
No, they did not, the petition, the petition does not, the petitioners do not include 100 percent of the residents.
Okay, I'm trying to figure out.
Approximately what percentage of all the residents?
There's, there's one, two, three.
Because the minimum requirement's 25 percent.
Correct, we, as noted in the staff report, we met the threshold by virtue of there being less than 15 resident registered voters, so we met the percentage under state law by virtue of the residents plus the property owners, so I think as far as residents, we have. Four, so less than, I mean, less than a half, roughly less than a half, but again, by virtue of having property owners also join, which obviously includes for all by virtue of the five acres that they own, that's how we meet the state requirement for.
All right, so I have a question because the Socoras, is that how you say that? They're already annexed.
They are not, they are still in Carroll County, but by consent order from Maryland Department of Environment.
Okay, so they did not actually get annexed into the town?
No.
It was a public health issue, and the town was required to hook up a lot of water.
Okay, so I thought that they were fully annexed, but they weren't. No, I know, I know, I know all that, I just, I just thought that they were actually annexed, but you're saying they weren't, okay, okay.
Now, I have a question, so when you got the people who are now living there to agree that they wanted to be annexed, were they aware of how much it would cost?
I mean, to be honest, at the time, we didn't even know sort of quantifying what it would cost in terms of the connection fees, you know, the discussions that I had, we made it pretty clear that what we were doing was the first step, so, you know, the concerns that were expressed were, you know, were values for the property, honestly, and obviously, if you annex and at that point in time, at that point in time, honestly, the way I was understanding the town code was there wasn't an automatic requirement to connect at the point in time in annexation, so you can see, obviously, after getting that feedback and hearing the concerns from residents from the last meeting, you know, we've proffered, we submitted a letter, and I believe it's available, that, you know, because we feel it's important enough, we're willing to, for any existing resident, also pay those connection fees for the town, to the town for existing residents, so.
So I have a question regarding the water, you know, based on the staff report, so we know that there's not water for any new development, now how about the current residents? If they were annexed in, would there be water available?
I don't think we have water availability.
No, because they're not current.
Right, right, so, so then what happens if they get annexed in?
I don't know if we could actually, that's a, that's a major issue, I mean, I don't know if we could actually approve it based on the fact that there isn't any water availability. Rachel, correct me.
I don't, I don't know about the approval process, but I do, I do know from the, our water allocation, we do not have any residential water available.
We've already, we've already proceeded with a series of identified priorities, an assignment of capacity, and the developments that have been waiting in line since early 2000s.
I just wanted to clarify whether those eight residences would have water if they were annexed in.
I think that, I think that was an issue with the Socoras too, but that, it did come up with the Socoras situation.
It gets you into a sticky situation where you're charging people taxes and not providing them the same services that you're providing all the other members of the town. And I, I think that was one of the, what was that annexation, was going around here, South I-70, you're gonna run into the same situation there, you're taxing people, but you're not providing the services that the town is providing for most of the people.
I would feel more comfortable if the residents were able to revisit these costs and these terms, and then if they came back and they didn't change their mind. And then if they came back and they didn't change their mind, or if there was no difference in, in their position, I think that would sit better with me. I just feel like they didn't have the facts when they were, um, when they were brought.
That is true, but, yeah, we, we didn't even, we didn't even know, they didn't know, so.
No, I mean, I, I mean, they, it was a timeline thing, but, um, but it's changed. I mean, there's a lot to digest here. So, you know, I'm not sure they, I would, I would like to know if, if those individuals that signed the petition would hold their positions with, with how they felt prior.
However, the, the staff report does share with us that the, the jump in price for connection fee from roughly eighty-two hundred dollars a household to eighteen thousand four hundred, that occurred in two thousand seven.
It's a long time ago.
Yeah.
But that number, but they didn't have that number when they were, when they were looking at this.
No, but the developers should have, that's what I think Bill's point.
Well, I'm not saying that they didn't have it, I'm just, I feel like.
Well, the residents didn't have it.
Right, right, well, right, the residents, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and Mr. Sikora, I asked him the question at the last meeting, how much it cost him.
Remember he said that?
And it was close to fifty thousand dollars.
Right, and I remember that, and that's, that's why I would say, I'd like to see if they maintain, if they wanted to keep their signature on that paper.
Right.
I mean.
And I don't say anything about this road, Ellis Road either.
It's almost a moot point. I mean, even, Mr. Sequoia said, uh, when he was talking, I don't know if we have, I mean, it's on the record. He said that he wished at the time he had not signed the petition.
I remember that.
Now, remember when we were talking last time, he said he wished he had not signed it. He's, was rethinking at that point.
Yeah, he did.
But the whole thing is moot because there are, look at the recommendation in the staff report. We do not have the water, the constraints of the water resources, the high, the capacity for the schools and the public benefits. We don't have any of that. This is a moot point. I mean, I know what you're saying, you want to revisit it, but I don't want to hold, I don't want to.
And, and the guidance from our updated master plan.
Right.
Is to focus on commercial and not residential, you know, and infill.
So even offering.
That's why MDX is something that we're very, very interested in.
So even if we offered it to them, they say, come back and look at the cost, oh, by the way, we have no water.
Right, I mean.
Right, I mean, it would be years before they would have a priority for, for water.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I, I think we can take a vote on that.
Yeah, I mean. I mean, I, I mean, I understand, and they're not here, but again, even if we could offer them something, we can't offer them because we have nothing.
Yeah, I don't think we're really basing it on whether they're here or not, because.
No.
We can't offer it. Okay, yeah, so you want to make a recommendation?
Um, I'll make it. I'll make it, and it's, it's essentially going to, uh, to be to convey what, what we have in the, the staff report. We've got it here, okay, okay. Um, I move that, um, the planning commission recommend an unfavorable recommendation toward this annexation petition, as described in annexation resolution number forty-two at this time, given the limitations that we've identified. Uh, they could, they continue, and we have, among them, the constraints of available water resources, restrictions in our local school capacity, and quite honestly, as we've discussed it, uh, and staff has pointed out, a lack of public benefit. For those reasons, I recommend that we propose an unfavorable recommendation back to the council.
A second thought. All those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. And thank you, Monica, for excellent staff report.
No, I apologize, Captain, being tardy.
You know, it is what it is for. Okay, so next we have, under unfinished business, rules and procedures for discussion and approval, so.
Okay, how about distribution of town fee schedule?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was part of the Dorsey.
I think that was part of.
I thought that was part of the Dorsey Town thing. Okay, I mean, if I skipped it, let me know. Okay, so we got that handled, so now, um, under unfinished business, rules and procedures for discussion and approval.
Madam Chair, I inadvertently opened my mouth and said more than I should have last time, so I'm going to recuse myself from discussion of this item, although I'm very impressed with the revised draft.
Thank you, Bill, I really appreciate that. Okay, so we have, Leslie was also lucky enough to go through this line by line. I call that lucky for you. It was fun reading. Um, Leslie, why don't you, you feel comfortable taking away with this one, because you have, the, your points were.
I thought, I thought that Tom did a really good job, and I just had a couple comments.
So we're looking at the draft rules and procedure.
Yes, the draft rules and procedure, eight pages. Everybody have their copy?
Yep, I know. I actually printed it out in color so it was easier to read.
Oh, that was good. I didn't have color, but I printed out my comments. Um, and, let's see. So I don't, I don't have anything until page three, unless I have something on page two that I don't remember, which is just, um, let's see. This looks different than what I have. Four point, four point three, um, questions, but they were.
Yeah, but all voting members must be seated at the.
There, I did put it there, didn't I?
Yeah, here, you take my colored one.
Oh, you have a colored one, thank you. Oh, you printed out my comments. Oh, excellent. Oh, my gosh, thank you. Let me see if there's something.
It's an accounting kind of thing, you know?
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, that was, hmm. All right, so page three. I recommend that we add at four point three, it's at the top, that all voting members must be seated at the dais of the planning commission. And the reason that that occurred to me is, it's like right before, right after, um, Tom talks about when people recuse themselves, they're leaving the dais as Bill just did. So to me, that means if you are, if you are participating and voting, then you should be sitting at the table. So that's one of my recommendations. He, he made a comment, Tom, that we probably don't need the reference to the ethics ordinance since we all obviously have to comply with the ethics ordinance, so I agree with that.
Yeah, there was a little bit in there that was a little bit redundant to what we already have in the code, so I think that he sleuthed that a little bit.
Yeah. And then, and I haven't really, well, I hadn't looked at our minutes yet because they were on email, but I know a while back, we kind of reduced our minutes to more, um, a limited whatever. And that, but at six point two on page four, Tom wrote out, um, it's, I think it's kind of, is it related, yeah, it's related to the Open Meetings Act where, um, let's see, the commission shall keep an open record of its resolutions, proceedings, and actions which shall be available for public inspection, blah, blah, blah. And I know we, everything is taped, but I was wondering if that also means that perhaps we, you know, shouldn't be having our minutes be, you know, bare bones, that maybe there should be a little bit more of them. I mean, it's just, I, I don't really have an opinion on it, but it's just.
We've, we've had this discussion at the council level, and because we are taped, you not, you need not even have written minutes.
Okay, okay, all right.
The, the tape is sufficient.
Suffices. As long as we're all speaking right into the microphone, then we're good.
Exactly, and I think that, and when we were at the open meetings, um, training, they, they talked about that, the taping was, yeah.
The tape is sufficient, okay. On page five, there's this, uh, reference to, it's like six point five, paragraph six point five. There's a reference to when somebody might request additional time, so say you have a speaker or someone who, not a, well, they call it a speaker, but someone who's presented something for, for the council and people are going to come and, and make comment, and they'll be limited, say, to two minutes or four minutes or whatever. Well, there's a paragraph that says if, if the speaker, I guess the person initiating it, wants additional time, they have to request it in writing within at least seven days in advance of the meeting. But there's no mechanism for whoever might be responding to also then be able to request additional time, um, if you follow my point. So let's say, um, Mr. Noel, is it, who was just here, let's say they had requested additional time, but the other people, the other residents didn't, didn't know, and so they did not have an opportunity to also request additional time. So I, it seems to me that maybe when someone requests in writing to have additional time, that triggers at least a couple days, two to three days or something, for other people.
Other parties, interested parties.
Other interested parties to be notified so that they might have the opportunity, opportunity to also request. Oh, but then I forgot, I made this other comment, which is, the other option is to leave the record open.
Mom, doesn't the petitioner always have the right to, um, get up and discuss that the, the petition, or whatever the petition is, you know, whether it's a development or something like that, don't they always have the right to finish the conversation?
Right, to finish it. Um, I mean, I, I think anything should be a part, if you want it to be a permanent part of the public record, it's either in minutes or it's in written correspondence. Is that what you're talking about?
No, it's, it's a timing issue. So when people are making public comment, it's like, all right, so you get two minutes, you get two minutes. You know, so, but Tom has a paragraph here that says, if so, if the, if the initiator, the, the initial speaker wants to have more than two minutes, they want ten minutes.
I get what you're saying now. Yes, you could submit your additional comments in writing because you're cut off in, in that time span.
Okay, so we could just, maybe we could just handle it that way, but make sure that people know that.
Yeah, well, that, the, the trigger would be when someone asks for additional time, then we have to make sure that we, okay, then open that up to all parties.
A lot of times people will, will take their whole speech and, and submit it to you, or they could just take what they weren't able to say in that two-minute time period or whatever, and then submit it.
So I guess it's just making sure that we're making people aware of that.
That they have that option so that their comments are complete.
Right, okay, all right. Thank you. And, let me see. On page seven, section ten, commission staff relationships. Um, let's see, Tom has something about the staff planner, his or her designee is the normal contact for all routine communications with, well, related to planning, which is pretty obvious. And then I think, um, I would add in section ten point two, that the chairperson or his or her designee is the commission's, um, normal contact back to the staff planner. So basically, you have a, a funnel through the chair to be dealing with the staff.
It's a, it's a control point, yeah.
Yeah, so that you don't have everybody going to the staff and telling them what to do, or asking them what to do. But let's say, you know, Roxanne goes to that public, the, the, the thing I can never remember the name of, the planning commission.
Oh, the commission, the, um.
State planning commission.
Yeah, Maryland.
So let's say you're there and, and there's some cool thing that you learn or whatever, and you want it on the agenda. So you go, let me know, well, I don't, I don't want to talk about it. You go and you ask whoever this top person is, but it, but it goes through you, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we do that, we do that for the town council meetings. I mean, Peter is the, is the.
Is the conduit or whatever, because I think, it seems like Heather was getting kind of overwhelmed with, you know.
Well, just the flow of it makes you, information gets, right.
Just people hanging her all the time, yeah.
Yeah, so just the flow of information, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that was it, except I think I had one other, um, thing at the beginning. Uh, when he, and on page two, he was talking about the quorum.
Oh, yeah.
A quorum shall consist of four out of seven, um, but then he, in, in his comments on the side, he said like, maybe you don't need a quorum if, if there's not going to be voting. Um, and he wasn't sure if that was obvious, when it says, no official business can be conducted without the presence of a quorum. So I thought, no official business, including voting, if you want to state the obvious. But, um, but I do think that we should always have a quorum before people are, with, if people are going to vote. Rather than say, oh, you, you know, people can vote, and then you might get overturned, like that's one of his other comments. I think we should always have a quorum if people are going to vote.
I agree.
So I don't. All right, so my comments.
Um, did anyone else have any comments?
Um, yes, I do. And my comments were strictly about, um, the ex parte communications. Tom had eight pages here, and I think there's ten here, in discussion of one thing. And I think the basic, the basic understanding is, as, as an elected town councilman, my job is different than you as an appointed, as an appointed commission. I actually am required to have ex parte discussions. Say, for example, we'll, we'll just, um, Frawl, not Frawl, Doc, uh, what's his name?
Fall.
Doc Fall.
Doc Fall, I'm sorry. Doc Fall wants to talk to me. He's a, a resident, a registered voter, okay? And he wants to talk to me about a seventy-three house development that he's putting in, and he wants to get me on his side with this. And that's totally within, that, that's totally within the rules and regs. That's an ex parte communication, because it's something that could possibly come before this commission.
What he.
And I am, I am required to speak to Doc Fall.
Yes, he said, the town council members recently have an ex parte communications, and, and in fact, the town council members are expected to engage in such ca, such communications is part of, is part of their job description.
Correct.
So.
So the question is whether, if you're going to do that, then you have to tell, you know. I mean, there's all kinds of different examples of how it's done. When you then disclose to the commission, I've had these discussions. I mean, he doesn't, I mean, I did think that was interesting with all the stuff you put in the letter, and then we here, we just have this little paragraph.
No, he's got this, he, um, an ex parte prohibition would have to be really broad to be unlawful. But no law can be found to guide me. In the state of Maryland, he could find no law requiring reporting of ex parte communications. Now, he, he finds samples where some community like this commission is, is talking about ex parte communications, but I do not think that this commission has the authority to tell town council what they can and cannot do in any way.
Well, the other thing that was interesting is that he also didn't find anything in the charter or the code that says ex officio members vote.
I, yes, I thought that was interesting too.
You know, because there's, because it does create a conflict.
If I don't vote, that's, I don't have a problem.
I know, because if you don't vote, then you can talk to anybody you want, you know, and it doesn't, it doesn't affect the commission. But this has been, you know, he noted that.
Well, this is, this is our town, this is our town policy. You didn't put it here, and I didn't put it here.
No, 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 I know, I'm not.
What we're trying to, what we're trying to do is we're trying to take that policy and change it substantially.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't know if we're going to change it, but it's like he, he happened, now, I thought, I looked again after I read that, because I thought I had seen that somewhere in the code, and then I looked again after I read his letter, and I'm like, I don't see it anywhere either, or in the charter. So I guess the question is whether it's going to create some huge issue to have ex officios vote, but with ex parte. I mean, I think with planning, it's a big thing, because, you know, the planning commission is a creature of the state. I mean, we're not, we're not subject to the council.
Tom, he, he clearly says that you don't, that you're required to put rules and procedure in.
Yeah, right.
The state requires you to do that, and that's fine.
As we discussed in April.
I have a problem with one of these, that is trying to take my job, that I come here with, when I get assigned to this commission, okay? And we're going to take that away when I sit down at this commission.
Well, I'm not sure, I mean, what I think, what I think is that we need.
And if you can decide it, why can't sanitation and recycling, or streets and roads?
Well, we're created by land use article, but we're the only commission that's created by a state article, state code. So that's, like, we're, even though we have to report certain things to town council, town council isn't in charge of the planning commission.
That's correct.
Yeah, so I think that's one big difference.
But we don't want to take that away from you. I mean, Maverick, craft something that, you know, puts that in there for you.
Whatever, what?
Yeah, this definitely has to be reworked, because I actually mentioned that, I forgot about that in my email to you, is that he has a super, all these things in his letter, and then we don't really deal with it in the actual draft.
Right, right, you know, but this was finally getting something back from Tom, because we hadn't had anything. To, and going back to Tom and going, well, wait a minute, now, thanks for this, now, can you kind of strict, get some of this into here? And yes, we want Bob, or ex officio. And yes, we want Bob, our ex officio officials, to be able to do those kind of communications.
So doesn't it lie in the fact that, the question lies in that whether Bob should vote? So if he votes, then we have to address the, those conversations.
Ex parte community, I agree.
Right, but if he doesn't vote, then it's not a problem, so where.
Well, I don't think we're gonna decide as this commission that he's not gonna vote, I mean, that's kind of a town policy thing.
It doesn't say that he can't vote, but we can't find that it says that he should vote.
Right.
So is that a town decision to, how do we figure that out?
I, I would think that would have to go back to Tom.
Agreed.
What's the, what is the?
I don't know the answer to that.
It's in the, I think, that, that would.
Seven years ago, I, I came to this commission and was told that I would vote.
Right, and that's been the tradition of the town.
It's not, yeah.
On each of the commissions, right, the council liaison votes.
Yes, which is very unusual.
That's consistent, right?
Yeah, it's unusual.
In most places, ex officio do not vote.
Right.
It's very unusual.
And then you don't have this ex parte problem.
Because if we come to a, if we come to something and it's, and it winds up as a tie, his vote could essentially change the tie, and he's not technically a member, he's an ex officio member. I, I have a hard time with the voting, but I, I think we have to change a charter or something in the, in the.
Well, it's not in the charter.
It's not in the charter?
No, that's a, it's not in the code or in the charter.
It's, it's more tradition than anything.
Right, that's the tradition.
But, I don't, I don't think it, I don't think the process is broken, we just need to figure out what the process is, whether he, whether he votes or whether he doesn't. If he, if he does vote, then we need to address it.
Right, yeah.
But if he doesn't vote, then it goes away. So, but it has to be consistent throughout the commissions and for all the council members.
Right.
And that doesn't sound like we are involved in that, in that decision, so.
I don't think it's gonna change.
How does it, how do, who dresses it?
Well, the, the council. Let me, let me jump in, let, let Mike.
O'Brien, eight oh six Park Avenue, I think Scott hit it on the head, and I think Bob's duty is to his constituents, and his duty is to listen to them and listen to their wishes, and I, and I do believe the voting thing is a conflict. But I think his duty is to try to convince you of what his, what, what his intake is, but I think, I think that's gonna have to come up to a council vote. And, and with Tom's, with Tom's tutelage, um, to try to resolve that, because it, it is an ex parte conversation. If you were in a court of law, you'd be found in contempt.
You and I have had thousands of them, everybody at this table receives calls on guns, right?
And that's your job.
Guns out of the house.
You were elected to do that.
Those are ex parte communications.
That, those are ex parte conversa, if you were in a court of law, you'd be found in contempt.
And I mean, I, I had a question about, like, these conversations that go on in Facebook.
Right.
Sure.
Same thing.
It is.
Exactly.
Emails.
Why is it on social media, right?
Any, any emails.
All that kind of stuff, I mean, and, and I, I just think that's gonna have to be resolved at a council level. But I, I, I think his job is being conflicted both ways.
Yeah, we agree, thank you.
I mean, with the, with that, with that gun issue, I only got whatever was sent to, to town hall and then, and then forwarded.
I didn't, right, I didn't receive any calls.
I didn't have.
I received, I received a whole bunch of emails.
Be- because of your position, because you are a council member.
Yeah, I didn't receive any direct emails.
Yeah, we didn't, and if anyone was starting to, if anyone would try to start to talk to me about it, I'd say, I can't talk about this issue.
And that's how it should be.
And that's how it should be. But, bringing this back in, what, what's next, Monica reaching out to Tom?
I would say definitely, um, Leslie's edits, and then just also to resolve this issue that, you know, ex officio voting versus not voting, and, and try to iron that out so that it's a clean, you know, it's a clean decision, so.
Everyone okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with that.
Yes, yes. Okay. Yeah, again, we're not, we're not, don't, we don't, we want you to do your job, Bob.
Yeah, what we were offered is not, I, I don't think is due.
Right, so, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
You wanna look, you wanna look at it again with revisions number two.
Yeah, you're right.
Yes, please.
Yeah, and if we can, I don't know, we can ask council to.
Very good point.
Ask Tom or.
Well, let's ask Tom first and then, then, ask Tom first and then go ahead and then take it to council.
Okay, no problem.
And then Tom could take it to council, I mean, I think Tom should be the one to take it to council.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, it can be, um, him taking it to council in September, because we're looking at it in August again and finalizing or whatever. It's fine.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Bill, you wanna join us? Okay, so next we have, um, oh, county liaison report, Harrison Lashire update, Councilman King.
Um, we have no, as, as of now, we're still waiting for MDE on Harrison, Harrison Lashire. Bonnie's not talked to me in the last couple of weeks, um, and that pretty much means we haven't, we haven't been contacted yet.
Are they still testing the wells?
No, 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 the wells were tested and they, they ran them through a series, a series of tests, and were testing neighbors' wells at the same time, trying to draw the aquifer down.
Alright.
And the, the test, or the well with the least flow was the one that they checked, and it was still getting good numbers, numbers that everybody felt were good, even when they're using wells that were on the property and from all around to try to draw down and make that thing run poorly, and it didn't. Is that, is that pretty much?
Yeah, when they pumped those wells, they have monitoring wells.
Yeah.
You know, in the surrounding area to see if there is drawdown, just like you said.
Very concerned about, you know, us drawing down somebody else's wells, and it, it just didn't happen. And some, sometimes it's, you know, government is government, it takes them a long time, MDE will probably, you know, this could take months and months and months. We just don't know. We used to be on the front burner when we were on, working on the consent order, I don't think we are anymore.
Good point.
Uh, let's see, we had that, everybody knows about the, uh, knows about the, um, the meeting that we had at the fire company about the downtown master plan. Make sure you hit the farmers markets, farmers market is really, really good this year.
It's really good.
Um, we've been doing a lot of stuff in EDC.
I know.
We've been doing a lot of stuff in EDC, um, there was a new president of MAMSA elected two weeks ago.
Who's that?
Pam Reed. Pam Reed will be, is the, is the MAMSA president, um, they've already made some major changes to downtown discussion, shall we say? And that's about it.
It just seems like there's, there's a lot more coordination, there's, there's more traction between the principals.
And they're just.
Involved with downtown.
What we're, what we're trying to do is, you know, foster goodwill through conversation, and it always happens. If you can get people that have been fighting for twenty-five years to sit around a table, they find out that they really don't have that much that they don't have in common.
Let me ask you, go back and ask you a question about Harrison Lashire.
Okay.
Is there any way to even project what might be a potential timeframe for that?
That's a good question.
It seems no, um, because there's a lot of things they do to keep it, to keep it going, but you run into these things like the water. Okay, and that's, it, it took almost a year just to get the plan, and, and then, once you, once you get it and pick a particular date, you have to, all these wells, and then it goes to MDE, and probably six months at MDE. It's been, it's been four months now.
I mean, you prove it nine ways from Sunday.
Right.
It's, it's one of the, one of the best capacity wells.
Well, and then that's, that's more, there's more questions get answered, but then, you know, where are we, where are we with the, you know?
Well, my question next is, answers, but after MDE gives their blessing, then what happens? It comes back to the town, the county to then negotiate?
Yeah, then, then they'll have, they'll probably have, well, they do, they try now to have sit downs, but they're so long in between these sit downs that, you know, town councilmen are gone, the guy that was discussing it last time, Peter remains the one solid anchor for the town that's involved in that, well, Peter and Tom, Peter and Tom don't miss any of those discussions.
But, yeah, the, the sad thing about this is the vision, the county vision, are these employment development campuses at the end of the fiber backbone.
Right.
Which connects the small communities, including Mount Airy, all over the county.
Right.
This has the potential to become our superhighway in the county. And virtually none of them have gotten off the ground.
We, they, they do make one thing very clear, um, because I am an advocate for the citizens of Mount Airy. And, um, the, the one thing that they make very clear to me all of the time is that somebody is gonna do this. That property is going to be developed into an employment campus, okay? So, what you have to decide is, do you want this planning commission to design this thing? Or do you want Carroll County to design it? I mean, eventually it's gonna come to us, and it's gonna be a good deal, okay? The, the land is worth a lot, and they're gonna annex it into the town, and then.
But they don't have sewer without us.
No, they don't, well, they don't have sewer, and that's what they need, so. And they, they also do not want this big piece of property hanging around their neck for the next forty years.
Well, right now, what people remember is the fine.
Right.
That was levied.
Well, just, just, I just want everybody to understand that we in Mount Airy will decide these things. Um, if we decide not to do it, it's gonna end up in the very same place, and it'll be a county project instead of a town one. They will get all the tax revenue, and yet we will have all the people riding through our neighborhoods trying to get to work.
Me, I, meanwhile, those types of employment campuses and tech campuses that you see here in Maryland and in Virginia, they're vacant.
Well.
Yes. They're vacant.
That's why.
When that started. It was the hot thing. It was the hot thing, and if they'd have moved on it, we'd have been okay, but they, they said vacant. Yeah.
Ten years later.
Look, look the guy that was, when they, the, the architect that was here at One Loudoun, when he said, we helped develop One Loudoun, he said, there is more, he says, not, not all that commercial is gonna be developed.
Right.
He said, it's just not, it's just not gonna happen.
And the whole direction changes over time.
And it's changed.
And I wanted to throw one little caveat in there, um, I think last month was the Twin Arch Business Center had been up and selling lots for fifteen years at that point. They are now halfway complete.
There you go.
So that's just to give you the idea of how long something like that takes. And the Twin Arch Business, or Twin Arch, that's not a huge, that's not a huge piece of property.
But it, it remains our first MXD example.
Mm-hmm. And did you see that, that building, I did not realize that building behind that guy's house was gonna be that, that huge, that big. When you go down to an arch and you see that building, I mean, it's, um, it's huge, it's a monster.
That's, that's pretty much all I have. Farmers Market, please go, okay?
Promise.
This is an awesome farmers market, and it helps our Heal Cities initiative through the, through the Maryland Municipal League.
We have the zoning administrator report, and Bill, did you wanna add anything about?
Yeah, I, two, uh, two, two quick things. We, uh, we got a, a posting, an email posting from Maryland Department of Planning, reminding us that, uh, if any of our planning commission members hadn't already done their state mandated required training, uh, basic planning commissioner training, it's gonna be available, uh, coming up, uh, in, in Ocean City. And what I, what I wanted to, to share with you, and more details to follow, uh, Roxanne and I are, are now on the Executive Committee of Maryland Planning Commissioner Association, and it's, it's really insightful. One of the things that MPCA board is doing is they're taking action on the feedback that all of the planning commissions across the state have provided them with that outreach project. And basically, what the planning commission members have said, we want to know best practices. There, there are a number, there's a short list of what we think, if we had the training and you provided us with resources and so forth, we could do an even better job, and we want to do as good a job as possible in our local planning commissions. So, you know, it's, it's a real easy thing to say, this needs to be job one for MPCA. You're going to see incremental planning, uh, courses and training that's available at the Fall Conference, which by the way, is gonna be in Gaithersburg, because Gaithersburg is celebrating the thirtieth anniversary.
Of Kentlands.
Of Kentlands, okay?
That is amazing here.
That was kind of the MXD project in Maryland that, that kicked everything off, thirty years, thirty years ago.
They're gonna try to have a, a couple of tours and speakers to talk about that process.
You're in elementary school.
That's gonna be an exciting conference. The other thing that, that I can report in this regard is that American Planning Association Maryland Chapter wants to partner with MPCA to develop the, this training capability, okay? Joe Griffiths and I, uh, he's with MDP, we presented at that, at the MPA Maryland Conference three weeks ago, and the, the response was, was fabulous, okay? Secondly, something I picked up at that conference is just been issued by the Maryland Sustainable Growth Commission. This is a blueprint, this is a set of recipes for reinvention, infill, redevelopment, revitalization in urban, suburban, and rural areas, all the way from policy recommendations to recommendations for funding for public-private partnerships, to examples and who to contact in communities all over Maryland that have done the very thing, that's on our priority goal list. So I'm ordering twelve to fifteen copies of this.
Great, that's what I was asked about.
Okay, and to share it liberally.
Okay, great.
Okay, because I think this really, in terms of the due diligence we wanna do, you know, in concert with the downtown master plan and so forth, this is gonna be so helpful to us.
Will you have it by the next meeting, do you know?
Oh, yeah, I'll have it, I'll have it by Friday.
Oh, okay, great, okay, thank you.
One more quickie.
Sure.
Be careful on that, on August the fifteenth, planning, the planning, um, teaching session. That's a Maryland Association of Counties project for that, we do it every year at MML. Maryland Association of Counties is down there that weekend for their, for their conference. So, and that is being offered because Maryland Association of Counties is down there.
Right.
So we have to, they could end up charging you for an entire day, as, and that's hundreds of dollars.
Are there any of our members who haven't already taken that course? And it's, it's available as a refresher online.
Online.
Yeah.
And they do offer them at, at other times, I just wanna, I check, I think town hall ought to check with what's going on.
It'll be offered at our, our MPCA conference.
Yeah.
Right, you know, I was just wondering, because I'd like to do a refresher, so there's a link.
There's a link.
Just go to, because I'm not going to be able to move that.
But just, just check on that before you decide to go, and I know you have to be scheduled, and it is a Mako conference.
I think there's a separate registration, if I'm not mistaken.
Very eas, very well could be.
There, I, I think on the planning, on the Maryland Planning website, I think there's a separate registration for that, so that you don't have to register the whole time. Um, and just, um, the conference, the planning conference is, um, the, the last weekend, actually, in October. Thursday, it's the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth, or the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh. Oh, October is one hour conference, though, Maryland.
And right now it's in Gaithersburg, whereabouts?
I, um, the Hilton, I think, if I recall, it's the Hilton, I think, but I'll make sure I let you know. Yeah, yeah, we all get the emails on it.
I think it's right across my work.
Oh, well. I think it is, I think that's the one where it is, I think that's where they, I think you're right. Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, thank you for attending the planning commission meeting, we're now adjourned at eight thirty-seven.
Wow.
Thank you so much, enjoy your evening.
Sixty-seven minutes.
And Heather, you miss us, I know.
From what I hear, she's enjoying herself.
Oh, well, she's right across from me, I should be able to see her. She's at, she's at the police station.